Terminology.
Bands.
Sixty dollar.
Two sizable structure.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Robert, you could probably hold that chair out. You guys could spread out if you were.
Yeah, these were.
Less Michael.
Stuff they were talking about.
Um. We've gotten really close lately.
Yeah. Robert's hollow like right about it.
This guy has been great. Well, we're good to go. All right. Just to get everybody started, um, we've had some very productive budget sessions. Um, I think we're sitting in a very good spot. So we'll see the top page is summary of all the individual budgets. Our revenue over expenditures anticipated, and then you'll see in yellow our, our capital asks. Um, so basically, uh, what we've been doing the last couple of years is really trying to separate that fifth cent in sales tax income, uh, from the rest of our general budget, because of course that's not guaranteed. Um, so technically, actually, just for one time expenses and you'll see here, um, that's what reflects those. So what we'll do is we'll go over each of the departmental budgets. Um, one of your fine, uh, usually try to do kind of a, a high level of review, skip over all the employee benefit stuff that you really don't have any ability to adjust. Um, we'll kind of go down through the line items. Um, feel free to ask any questions about anything that's in any of the line items or anything like that, but, uh, everything we, uh, hopefully should be pretty close. Um, what we're seeing is, uh, really the major, uh, increases this year is urban and just the salaries. So I'm gonna, I hate to do it, but I'm gonna take everybody out of order. Um, I'm.
I can't hear. Kim, does it sound like? Does it sound like it's playing through the queue?
No.
When he's talking?
I don't hear myself.
Okay.
Hear me now. Yeah. One, two. Yep. I can hear myself now. Okay, so, um, court is a relatively, um, simple budget stays, uh, pretty much the same every year. Um, so I told the judge and, uh, Vicky that I would be happy to present the court budget for them. So, um, it's about halfway through your packet. So I'd like to go ahead and start with the court budget if it's all right with everybody.
That's a lot of paper.
So then I'll skip, we'll skip back up to the top and go through the individual budgets after, but I figure we'll get this one out, out of the way first. All good? Did you find it? Oh, just making, making sure. Okay, so, uh, like I said, uh, we'll skip past all of the top lines, which are just employees, benefits, salaries, things like that. Um, things we really don't have the ability to adjust. Um, so moving on down, you'll kind of see a lot of zeros there, not much changed. We'll get down to notary expense. Um, they're removing that from the budget. So that's a, a decrease, always a welcome thing. Um, bank charges increased a little bit. You'll see there went from, uh, uh, $2,000 we budgeted last year to 2,500. And you'll see why in the current actual, because they're currently at $2,200 this year, um, with increased fees. So that's why you're seeing that 25% increase on that line. Um, moving on down to, uh, professional services, um, we have a slight increase there. And Lexi, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that covers our software.
Professional services?
Yes. That's the judge. Okay. Um, so we do have a, a slight increase there from 21.6 to 24. We got the court appointed attorney. We're actually dropping that 11%, uh, percent. Um, cause our current spend has been cheaper. Haven't had any big court cases or anything going on. Um, then you'll see the big one down there is jail fees. Um, we've got a 50% increase in jail fees. And that is due to a couple of factors. Um, so one is the fact that, uh, over the last couple of years, our inmate per day jail fees have increased significantly over the last couple of years. Um, so we're seeing that across the board. You'll see that in police as well when we get to that budget. Um, but additionally, um, the judge, uh, said that, uh, we may have a more need for this in the upcoming year. Um, he said some of the people, uh, before him are not, uh, responding, uh, appropriately, uh, to the court cases. Um, so there may be an uptick in, um, individuals that will receive jail time in the upcoming year. So he asked for that increase, um, which I feel was warranted. Um, then you'll go down to maintenance and service agreements, and that one's our software. So we went to the electronic court software. So the increase in that is the costs for our hosted, uh, court software. So, um, very good. Uh, we are recently online. Um, so that's live and we are working on an online payment system now. Um, I believe we have a meeting in a couple of weeks. Um, so then the citizens will be able to log in online and make their payments online. So almost complete there. So in a nutshell, that is the court budget. Anybody have any questions or like to dig deeper into any of the particular line items?
Just seeing the trends and stuff.
And I, yeah, I think this is meant to, you know, help with some of the repeat offenders and things like that. So, um.
Serve to that coming up for stories that the county manager is sending some of their legal problems.
Well, and we all also have some pretty big projects going to go on in the county, um, here kind of coming up. The Cedar Springs, uh, wind farm, uh, there's the Dino Solar, um, solar farm, uh, Anna Klein. Um, so we will have, uh, other people traversing through our community. Um, so uh, rather have the money than be looking for it later. So was my thought. Any other questions? All right. Well, with that, we'll jump back to the front again and we'll jump into the police department's budget with the chief. And chief, um, I didn't say this, but my intent was to go through the budgets, uh, kind of like we did, and then we'll circle back around with the capital. With the asks. I'll do it if you want.
No, I.
Okay.
I'm just gonna let you run the.
I certainly, I have no problem. Doesn't matter to me. I'm on the roll.
Two hundred and everything about two hundred is pretty much that's it. Uh, other than the overtime line, uh, we've got that the same. You use hard go time. We have some interesting things. So, um, so going back to your dues and subscriptions. The, uh, we got a slight reduction in dues and subscriptions. It's about a slight increase. Um, so dues and subscriptions. So for those of you don't, um, it's like our PMI evidence software, icp.net, uh, which is a networking law enforcement tool, which has model policies from agencies across the nation that we utilize to, uh, keep our policies up to date. The, uh, there's a outfit we subscribe to. So all, so we need, so let's say, council A gets her water ball stolen. It's got a VIN number. We put it in and you pawn it at a pawn shop by law. They're required to report this stuff. So it's a program that all the pawn shops across the nation report to. So we subscribe to that. It's $1,500 a year. Um, so that's kind of what dues and subscriptions are, uh, WASCOP chiefs and sheriffs. See, so registrations, that's our training line. So since like last week, three of us went down. Training and stuff. Uh, travel expenses, lodging, meals are tied to that it did reduce the lodging and meals, just looking at the prior year or current year. Anyway, so, uh, we did.
I'm trying to be able to hear you and it's.
Does that help when I do this?
Helps Greg.
Yeah, well, I like to throw my head and talk to everybody. So, all right. So there's a reduction in lodging and meals. And looking at the upcoming year, we've got a couple of positions require those. We're not near the lodging, the travel side of things. So let's see, the credit card bank fees. So that's the machine downstairs, uh, that we have in place. Status quo office supplies, uh, slight increase, mostly due to inflation, but the increase of, uh, printing, uh, this is a decrease. So when you look at the cooler colors, the brown is a decrease and the red is increases. And the larger status quo. So slight decrease or upcrease in printing. So like our, uh, uh, warning, rapid warning citations stuff that we have. And then safety uniform equipments, state status quo, that's, uh, telephone. That's the cellular data that, uh, our MDTs use. Sure, we have to run a CAD calls, records of that line. Uh, postage, a little bit of a decrease, uh, just looking at how things go. Hopefully with Brandy, we don't have to have a bunch of reeducation or pick up more grass this year, but, uh, so we may see a decrease through the year. We'll see. First aid supplies, um, we haven't used as much of that this year as we did last year. So we had a decrease there. Uh, professional services, um, so like psyche valves and stuff like that for new hires is typically what we use that line on for. So we're, I left this status quo just because we have a couple of backgrounds, hopefully it approved. Testing, so we'll see how that line goes. If we can get these positions filled by July 1st, it should be around this line. Vehicle expenses, tires, oil changes, wipers, and a lot of stuff. So increase, um, a lot of tire issue. Figured another car will get some floods and stuff done on it. Gasoline equipments, um, free status quo of those, because the gas prices fluctuate. Came down, but I proceeded to go back up in summer and we were able to work with the three children. But I'm sure I have money to get to the calls that we told. Uh, equipment expenses, um, so we look at, so every year, so like we use a certain amount of ammunition to train with. Our less lethal stuff, so like OC and Taser, some that has to be replaced and like evidence supplies. So we use evidence bags and things like that to replace. So that's just an example of what we use it for the line for. Misalinas is for those unpredicted things that come up. Radar breaking down or, you know, if your breakout's go out and like that. Flashlight needs to roll through law. Technical stuff. So slight increase, just looking at how the year went. Jail fees. That's a uptick, um, jail fees, sheriff's office. Just mayor explained earlier, they moved their rates at $141 a day now, hires from state, the closest is at $125. So, uh, let's see, then PSCC, um, big, big, that's probably the biggest increase. This guy, now we're, um, so we started into the GIS stuff a little bit. I think they have one more meeting next week, but she did try running some calls this week. So we're hoping that, uh, using GIS versus CAD. It's about, I think it's $15 a call is what we get billed by. If I'm wrong, somebody correct me with that kind of things. So Candace calls in, your dog's running loose. It's $15 for the call. Whatever it is. So if we go out to the traffic stop, it's $15 for that call. So with the idea of GIS, we're like all the zone code stuff, hopefully we can take that down. Somewhere between nine and 42,000. We'll see how the year goes once we get this going. Uh, animal control was an increase, a lot mostly due to going back to metro, um, using it for housing our animals. That's where that baby increase comes from. Um, office equipment. We'll talk about the other second capital earnings. Reimburseables is typically sweet to have that policy. So like if the guys want to buy a vest or something, that calls the reimbursement line. So, uh, the maintenance agreement is a property upstairs.
Any questions for the chief? Like I said, everything really, we tried to just keep status quo, short of the, the raises was the big change that we, uh, put out there. So, all right, I guess we'll move along. If there's no other questions to fire.
So with fire, uh, honestly, I'm gonna try and keep this simple. It's might be stayed pretty close to what it was minus obviously the raises and stuff. We did have an increase in registrations, but that's because of the internship program with the college kids. Office supplies went up because we need to replace some computers this year. Normal stuff, gas and electricity. That's what took the jump because all those are going up.
Uh, just for counsel, we did anticipate the electrical increase being approved. So that's all reflected in the budget. Uh, so that they're asking for 21% at the state level.
Well, yeah.
The electric Rocky Mountain power.
All the hikes and everything.
So all those are reflected.
Trying to anticipate that change. Uh, small tools went up last year. We didn't really buy much for small tools this year. We have to replace a chainsaw for the brush truck. Chainsaw. So that's why that one went up. Professional services went down. Equipment expense went down. The FPC went up. And that's pretty much it. I, most of, most of my asks are in the capital, on the capital side of things. So honestly, there's not, there's not a lot in my pocket in the budget that can walk different from the last five years. This is pretty much the same every year outside of my capital asks. A lot, a whole lot of change.
Got a question on registration, 15,000.
Yes, I covered that. That's for the college internship.
Okay.
Yeah. Cause we went, uh, we're doing, instead of doing three interns, we're doing six interns. So, and that program is working out very good.
And even do, we do see that, uh, cost that we're, uh, putting into those individuals, uh, the benefit to the town far outweighs. Um, so, um, I think it's been a really great program for both the town and the individuals themselves, uh, to get that real time experience. Not only from their college, but the. It's great. Great.
That was the reason we doubled our interest.
It's a big number, so.
But outside of that, like I said, it's a pretty. It's, it stays pretty close to the same every year. So, I mean, there's market nuances, but.
Anything else stick out with the fire department? All right, moving on. Uh, next is PW General.
I also tried to pass the mic. I also tried to stay at status quo. I do have an increase in safety equipment uniforms for PW General. And a slight increase in fuel expenses.
And you'll see the fuel expenses again are, we're currently trending over budgeted amount. Um, so we had to increase those next year to compensate. So you know, we talked about this repairs and maintenance, Robert. Did that include your, uh, cameras?
No, it's enough.
Okay. That's the thing is like the garage door broke in the storm last year and stuff. So, um, we had several items at PW break last year with the snowstorms, which cost a significant amount of money to repair. So everything they've got costs a significant amount of money to repair. So. Uh, true, true, insurance, not too much else. Anybody else see anything they'd like clarification on from Robert for PW General? All right. Moving right along, uh, Robert may be up for a while now because he's got multiple divisions to handle. So, uh, we'll jump over to streets and alleys.
Again, the streets and alleys, I tried to stick with the status quo. I have been the highlighted portion here. I have been looking into, uh, a crack seal program that the town can do on its own. I got a quote a couple of months ago to do just a few streets here in town. And it, the quote that was given me would have wiped out my budget for the year for streets and alleys repair. So over the next year, I'll be looking at various options to build a crack fill program. And basically that will just help with potholes and things of that nature, help them prevent them from forming. And then I've got another increase in, uh, fuel costs, of course, diesel and both gasoline.
I'd like to point, highlight that, uh, crack and seal program. Um, so as we all know, it's very important to maintain our roads to keep them, uh, up and operating, um, because replacing them is far more expensive. I spoke to Robert about this and I believe this is a very ambitious program on his side. It's a lot of work. Um, so I would, uh, like to temper expectations with that, uh, by no means do I figure that this, at least the first year would cover all the streets in town. Um, but you can see from the quote was substantially higher to have someone else do just three streets. Um, so I think it is a good investment. If it's something the town can do and we're just investing our labor into it. Um, we can stretch those dollars much farther than paying an outside company to come in and do it. Um, and crack sealing is one of the best ways to increase longevity of our streets. So. Any thoughts or questions with streets and alleys? All right. Contemplating. Maybe have a question?
Well, no, I mean, a lot of residents just talk about the potholes and issues. So with the crack seal program, I mean, obviously I hear what you're saying. What's, what's going to be? Like, how will these things get handled over time since you were talking about that that would have wiped out your budget?
So what the goal is right now is to buy a few key pieces of equipment that will be they're not very expensive and then trying to do a couple of streets at a time to see what it's like, labor intensive. And so that picture, how much material will be?
So then will we start with the streets that have the most damage first?
Probably start high traffic areas first.
High traffic areas first. Okay. That was my only question.
I don't have anything else for. Streets and alleys will.
I've got a question on diesel fuel, on road, off road, uh, fuel tax. Would that be in a different line item?
That what was?
Fuel tax for off-road vehicles. If you have a diesel, you know, piece of equipment, is that being calculated in there?
So how we typically do that is we pull it out of the diesel fuel line item. We do have a bulk red dye tick that we fill. And that comes out of, I usually take turns. Out of, uh, parks, sanitation, streets.
All right. If there's nothing further, we'll move over to parks.
Couple of my increases in parks would be safety equipment, uniforms, uh, small tools. And that's just, uh, steel toe boots, things that are your safety equipment and our shirts, of course. Small tools, a lot of our tools are starting to get a little on the aged side.
Question with overtime, uh, is that your seasonal or obviously there's not too many immersive seats for parks.
So how our overtime budget works is we have a parks, employee, streets, things of that nature, but everybody is on call. And if you had, if you carry the on-call phone and you get called in for snow plowing, that's what you're doing.
Typically the snow plowing that. Especially this year.
Yeah, this year pushed us over. So.
Cause everybody, every salary is to a different budget. And so when everybody comes in for a snowstorm, every budget gets hit with that overtime.
Any other questions with parks? All right, we'll move along to wastewater.
Again, wastewater status quo, I did up my, I did request a little bit more out of repairs and maintenance just due to some of the issues that we've been having with some of our equipment. Hopefully as we get some of this aging equipment replaced, we'll quit having problems with it and that number can go back down. A good example would be, uh, some of the lift station items like, uh, Reshaugh lift station that we had to have the pipes replaced.
And you'll see now that we're currently 70% over budget on that line for this current year. So.
So how much aging equipment do we have? In your court area?
I've got two more lift stations to do.
And that's just the big, big ticket items. Um, so there's a lot, we have. Um, so there's a lot, we have a lot of aging, uh, infrastructure in town. Um, from the sewer lines, the water lines, streets, um, a lot of our stuff definitely is in need of some attention, so. Um, Robert has, uh, started proactively dealing with, uh, some of the aging equipment on the residential side, not so much in wastewater, but I know, uh, in the water, uh, replacing meters and things like that being proactive. Uh, so they're not, we're not being so reactive, um, to these things, but, uh, it's a substantial amount and it's gonna take a lot of time for us to right the ship, I think.
So then are we focused more on the equipment that is not doing well at all? Cause we're being proactive and not reactive, right?
So the, the latest pump that's been replaced, which oddly enough was done on Monday. That was an issue that was spotted during an inspection. And that was kind of a reactive replacement, but more towards a proactive. Cause I, it was functional, everything was fine. It was just a little on the slow side. But by not replacing it, you're running a high risk of something catastrophic happening.
Alright. Don't see much else. Does anybody have any other questions, uh, in regards to wastewater? So I spoke too quick, so now we're in the water.
So water, I tried to keep the same for the most part. Uh, I was able to reduce a couple of line items. We didn't spend much in safety equipment and uniforms this year. So I reduced that by a little bit. Uh, the big one though is a new equipment. The original plan for this winter was to buy a bunch of meter pits and meters. And over the winter, work our way through town and some of our aging meter pits and get those replaced. Well, Mother Nature had different plans for me this year, so we didn't get as many of those replaced as I would like. So we still have quite a few in stock, so we won't need as many for the next couple of months. Or over the next year. I think I still have ten in stock.
And that was what I just heard, just trying to be proactive with some of these items. Any questions on water distribution? And continuing with Robert, we'll go into sanitation.
Last one, I think. Again, everything's pretty much the same. Uh, with the ex, the exception of vehicle expense. Again, that's another, another area where aging equipment.
And you can see we're currently fifty percent over budget in current year actual, so. What's the new equipment drop?
So in this bu, in previous year's budget, I had requested a brake press to bend some steel so we can start repairing our own three yard dumpsters and yard and halves. Uh, I did a little bit of research on that. We were spending quite a bit of money replacing those and having them shipped here. Uh, so ten thousand dollars, we purchased a brake press. And we can bend the sheet metal ourselves, weld them on to the bottom of the three yards and yard and halves, get them painted and put them back in service. Yeah, I think I calculated the return of investment at about ten or eleven bins being replaced.
Those are crazy expensive for those garbage cans. Alright, any other questions for sanitation? Alright, go to water treatment. Robert, you wanna do it or you want me?
I suppose not, you have it.
Okay. Uh, water treatment, um, if we go down through, see not a lot of changes in the top, uh, dues and subscriptions. Um, a slight increase because we are currently over on our spend there. Um, again, also with registrations, we're going from, uh, seven hundred dollars to fifteen hundred dollars because we're currently at thirteen hundred and fourteen dollars. Um, and that's all of the, uh, registration stuff to keep our licenses up to date and, um, going in. Yes, yeah. So we've got to bring that all up to date, uh, the newer employee. Um, of course, gas, electricity increases. Um, professional services went down. Um, that was due to a project, uh, that was completed last year. Don't need to re-budget for that. Um, leases and permits, that was due to, uh, last year, uh, if you remember, we had a call on the river and, uh, uh, basically couldn't pull water from the river to produce water. Um, so we had to dip into our reserves. Um, our reserves, we were carrying a hundred acre feet of water is what we were carrying in our reserves. It's just so odd for me to say that acre feet in water. Um, and we increased it, we tripled it, is basically what we went this year because um, what you'll find is that one month, it wasn't even a full month that we went without last year, and I think we used forty five acre feet. Eighteen? Okay, for what we don't use, but basically, uh, in that regard, all we can pull to produce water for the citizens is what we have in the bank. Or we have to buy it at an exorbitant rate when those calls are put on. So I felt that us having a little more in reserve and more in our back pocket um, would be more beneficial to the town so that the next time the call gets put on, um, we don't go through those reserves and have to pay a higher rate. And last year, there was a good chance that they could have put another call on the river in August. Luckily, knock on wood, it didn't happen. Um, but, uh, I would rather be prepared than that catch us, uh, by surprise. So that's what that increase was due to the, uh, increase in cost for the water. Office equipment. Uh, maintenance and, uh, service agreements you'll see went up. Um, and that is due to some equipment that we replaced this last year. Um, we replaced the, uh, air compressor, um, that is in the shack that pulls our water from the river. Um, so this is to put, uh, that new equipment on a service plan. Um, so that we're constantly keeping it serviced and up, up to speed, so. That is most of the notable changes in water treatment. Anybody have any questions on the water treatment? Alright, court already did. General government.
General government. Um, that's ten forty-three. Really, um, everything is pretty much status quo with general government. I did increase the repairs and maintenance. Um, that's line item ten forty-three, four hundred. We've gone over our repairs and maintenance expense for this year. We had some concrete work done last year, quite a bit of concrete work done. We've got some more that needs to be done. But then we also had our fire line, uh, for the sprinkler, fire suppression system leaking. And so that racked up the expense and then we just have had some big repairs and maintenance on the heating HVAC system. So I've increased that to, um, eighteen thousand for this year. Um, behind that sheet is a, a breakdown for the general government. And it kind of breaks down where some of the, the funds are being budgeted for. And one of the things that is a new ask this year is YCC. They're asking for twenty thousand dollars. Um, I have budgeted ten thousand, but I don't know what the council's feelings are on how much they want to budget for the YCC.
Not like seeing anything more than ten thousand on the YCC. You five is goodwill, but yeah. Four twenty. I guess Casper, uh, understand that the pavement plan or something is, yeah, something like that.
They allocate their entire, uh, four year cycle of the fifth cent, um, to the stuff, so that's why that kind of was in there. Um, I don't feel comfortable with us, especially since we haven't split our fifth cent payments out of our operating budget totally, that we could commit to multiple year commitments in my own side, so. Um, and I know there was also some discussion brought up about, uh, the cap program as well. Um, so if, uh, council were to decide to, to distribute those, absolutely. Need a mic?
Just a couple of things to consider, so. Cap is, so social services is always a tough discussion to start. Uh, the town has an actual position with the child ads project, uh, which I think is in major part of the month. They're, they're monthly, but I go every third month, the projects are done, so. In, in the world of PD, my social services, we compare cap versus YCC. We have more kids go to cap than we do YCC, which cap is for any kid or even some adults in some way, especially if they're victimized, uh, that are specialized in forensic duty. So if we're going to discuss money in social services, it'd be by far better for our benefits really cap versus YCC. YCC, we don't place the kids there, the parents place them there. For those of you don't know, I'm the chairman of the DFS oversight council in St. Louis. So YCC gets funding from the DFS, Department of Education, they get federal grants, so they get donors. Uh, they, they get a ton of other funding and funding for their kids.
That was gonna be my question.
To their bills, uh, I have somebody a deal for the budgeting on the bill side, but my understanding is they're only going to send five thousand YCC on the bill side. And they, I don't know, but so this, some state legislative people, it's my understanding, are pushing to say that municipalities need to be funding social services, not state. It's a double edged sword. Yes, we need these social services in some aspects, but the state isn't going to give us any money either. And you know, ten thousand dollars. I'd rather see Robert get more money in his budget for equipment that needs updated and stuff for four kids that if they don't have a bed, the kid doesn't go there and all we do is, we transport, that's it. Uh, these kids are if this plan can't be controlled by parents, I mean, that is a home thing. Like WBI, they're, they don't come ask us, they do insurance, they have federal funding, they have state funding. So where do you draw that line? If we start funding them, the state says, oh, look, they're doing this and we're not getting more money from them. So in my opinion, cap by far should have, I think, the budget.
I think you had fifteen hundred in your budget and they, yeah, they asked for fifteen hundred.
And honestly, we, we get way more use out than fifteen hundred we give them. Like they, we should be funneling the money to cap.
I think cap is only asking for fifteen hundred, but what I hear you saying is that we utilize cap way more than utilizing YCC.
Yeah, sign significantly more.
So then I guess my question is why would we be giving to YCC ten thousand dollars? If we are not utilizing, I, I feel like, I feel like for me, I can say that because I've worked in the mental health field for seventeen years. And so like I understand that they're asking for money and they come to ask for money, but when we're thinking about realistically and from budgeting purposes, I humbly agree with you that why would we be giving money to something that we're not technically utilizing in our, in our town and putting our money towards cap or heavy equipment or something that we need to be utilizing? Granted, I understand, you know, what YCC said when they came here and they talked about the idea that, you know, donors are drying up and people aren't, you know, giving as much money and thing, things of that nature, but if we're, if we're looking at from a standpoint, if you're telling me we've only got four kids that go, that's over two thousand dollars per child that we are paying to basically be in a facility. I don't see that being from a budget standpoint, I don't see that being the best use of that money. That, that's, that's my humble opinion, but.
That ten thousand is just.
It's a placeholder, so it's what we threw in there to have this discussion and get council's direction. Um, but it's what, you know, a placeholder in there so that we can, we have the discussion and reflect that, that we can afford that.
Yeah, I just don't feel like that would be the best use of our funds. I could see if we had a bunch of teenagers, children in the community going, utilizing their services, things of that nature, but I feel as though we would be putting money where we don't need to be putting that money. I don't know, for me, I just don't feel like that would be financially responsible for us to do that.
Taking myself away from cap, just looking at all the side of things, outside of the board. We've seen, we've had enough taken kids going to cap, um, similar to our jail pops. I don't, I, I see trends that if I keep having kids and people, especially as an example, we had the shooting last week, they had kids, now those kids are young enough, they can go to cap. They live two hundred years older, not like sex crime, but a shooting crime, that those kids will get in cap.
How many kids do we actually have going to cap?
Uh, I have to look at, it's between twelve and fourteen, I'm not the cap scorer this year.
It's twelve to fourteen, but they're only asking for fifteen hundred dollars.
And that's been the status quo.
Okay, years.
Years, yeah. And so that, so that's, you know, if, in looking, you know, looking at the two social services, like we come to your house, this is the problem, you have issues, this community wise, whatever it is. Unless there's a bed open and you commit him, all we do is transport. If he runs away, again, that, that actually it's a Castro P U thing, it's a prescription of ours. Uh, we can take the runaway report, but like, all it is, it's a placement to break up the time between the two because you're having one. You know, but it really is not a, you know, we don't force people there, we can't. Cap, you know, goes directly, so you take these kids, you know, in critical cases, you gotta fix the services and so it's all, so like, in my opinion, cap should be increased for usage that we're using.
So then if cap was increased, we could take a portion of the money from YCC that we are offering up, putting it over to cap where we could potentially look at the crack and seal program or the heavy equipment or things that are going to be functionally utilized in the town.
Absolutely, that's why we wanted to have this discussion, like in council direction. You know, I live by town, take, I'll just use the example, tires come back or repair the board, something like that, places that you say, how will you change a lot? They have, this department needs, needs a lot to replace that stuff.
I would prefer to see that money go what is going to be more beneficial to the town. Two areas that are going to utilize that money for specific things that are going to assist the residents, assist the town, make things more functional. I mean, I'm all for mental health. I'm all, I, I support social services. I'm not saying that. Yes, I, I've been in the line of work enough, enough years, but I support, I support social services. I support all of that, but from a reality standpoint, if we're not utilizing this social service as much as maybe Mills are, Casper is, or, you know, other entities. I, I do feel like it would be irresponsible for us to give money, just to give money when we've got our public works director here saying we need replacements on heavy equipment that's actually going to help our town function and run. that's actually going to help our town function and run. I mean, that's just, that's just my take on it. I don't feel like, I feel like we would be irresponsible to put that money towards something that we're not utilizing, and as, as much as I would love to say that it's going to help a social service entity in town, from a budgetary standpoint, from our town and what we're utilizing, I don't know, I just wouldn't be able to wrap my mind around feeling comfortable doing that, I guess, is. I know, during flag dag without me making.
No.
I support the social services, I'm just looking at it from a reality standpoint here.
This is a discussion we wanted to have and get council's thoughts on how they would like to allocate these funds, so, all these thoughts are welcome, absolutely.
What the YCC, yeah, given the, you know, new insight here, yeah, I definitely, you know, I'd like to see going a little more to cap, but maybe having a small line item for emergency social services, not designated as YCC, but if we have something that comes up, or cap is running into trouble, we, we'll have that money allocated, not necessarily used, so, yeah, something like that.
Mills is, did Mills is contributing five?
That's what I'm saying.
I, I.
I think they were three, close to the same to the town that I talked about, the chief there, they were.
But they would be spending a thousand, two fifty per kid to go to YCC for less than ten days, less than five days, dependent upon the acute care that's happening. I mean, I'm thinking numbers-wise, I'm just thinking. No, they're acute care, they're basically just a housing, a housing unit in the interim, dependent upon.
It's a timeout.
Yeah, if the child's going home, or if they're reporting to WBI.
You know, like. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, while I was in Salt Lake, we had a council meeting, and that was a very in-depth discussion about the Boys and Girls Clubs, YCC, and funding, and all the stuff that goes into this. As a thought process, since numbers are being discussed, you know, social services are important, we're talking tax money, you know, jail bees are typically divided crimes, and court issues, which is part of that, that's actually what comes to mind, when a kid and a parent need a timeout. Is that really a tax, not an issue? Is, like, you know, so, as a, and again, and it's the council opinion and what they want to put in there, but if, you know, we're talking two thousand, what, if you, two thousand of YCC, three thousand cap, or, I have room, but cap, cap is definitely utilized more by the, it's good to know. I don't know how you put a number on it.
Well, because if we, if we do two thousand for YCC, we'd be looking at five hundred per kid. I mean, even if you look at some of the psychiatric hospitals, things like that, they're running around three forty, three eighty per day to house a child in their facility, and that's food, shelter, lodging, the whole, the whole bit. So. I would feel comfortable at least going two thousand instead of ten to YCC, and then if we were gonna do cap, cap's asking for fifteen hundred, but cap's never asked more for fifteen, more than fifteen hundred?
If we're using them, we could double that, in good conscience.
So if we do two for YCC, we do three for cap, and then let's allot five thousand for heavy equipment over on public work side, or to someone else, some other department that could utilize that money, like, I, I could, I could be okay with, like, five hundred. I could be okay with that, because I, I know how much it costs to house a child in a psychiatric facility per day. Like, I could be okay with five hundred, you know, if we need a timeout or whatever, if we're utilizing cap a little bit more, I would be okay with that, because then in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, the money is going towards services that we're actually utilizing in, in this town, and then the remainder of the money actually go towards additional things and projects or equipment that we need, instead of trying to grapple with, where are we going to come up with additional budgeting? That's just my thought on it.
So what I'm hearing, summarize that up, your suggestion was?
Two for YCC, three for cap, and five thousand for public works, heavy equipment, because they're.
I agree, I agree.
Chainsaws.
It's something, like, you need to be on that, you look at the cost of electronic stuff, I know, just the electronics stuff, and that's gonna be a huge thing in the future, so.
Yeah, and everything seems to cost more and more all the time, so. All right, well, everybody's good with that allocation. I'm definitely good with it, so. Okay, so we'll adjust allocations there?
Other than that, as far as general government goes, everything's pretty much status quo. I did do a twenty percent increase on electricity and an increase for the natural gas. But yeah, everything's pretty much holding the same.
Turn the page, I have a question on CATC.
The CATC?
Yeah.
So, that goes towards citizen ridership for the reduced, we budgeted a thousand, huh?
Did we have a link? No?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's to help the low-income purchase tickets, like, at half price, to, to still ride.
Subsidized rides.
Yeah, subsidized rides.
Okay, I didn't know if that's a scheduled, well, what do you call it? Scheduled bus, but yeah, okay. So an increase in ridership?
I really don't know where the numbers are on ridership. The other thing, senior citizens, we haven't, we didn't spend for a couple of years, the five thousand dollars that goes to the senior citizens for their meals up here, they were closed because of COVID, and so that's something that I will be paying out of the budget this year, and then I'm presenting another, or asking for another five thousand to continue that program.
I will jump in and assume that Greg, your concerns are CATC as over the current year's spend?
Yes, yeah, current year's spend, yeah.
But we're at current layer.
Oh, that's ten forty-three, five thirty?
Yeah, the, we purchased a new bus for the service, so we, we maintain a portion of the bus for that service, and that's why that cost is there. It was just misappropriated in a different line item.
That's right.
So, yeah. That should be on the previous page's line item, so it got put there, so that's why you're seeing that high spend this year.
Okay.
But we're anticipating the actual cost at eight thousand dollars this coming year, which is the same as what we currently budgeted, so it's a even cost. Sorry to jump in, I was just.
Sorry, I.
Anticipating what you were after, so. All right, any other questions, thoughts on general government? The community center?
Um, pretty much, status quo with the community center. We've had, you know, some ups in the repairs and maintenance. The building is thirteen years old now, so we're starting to see, you know, some repairs and maintenance there. We have budgeted three thousand dollars in equipment expense, because we have found that the DVR system is not working for the security cameras up there, and so we're wanting to get that addressed.
How often is the, I mean, how often is the community center, we have a lot of people, that's something that I always.
The seniors use it daily. We go in spurts, where sometimes we're, we've got group upon group upon group in there on a weekend.
I know the fire department leverages it quite regularly for their meetings and things.
Yep. We've got businesses that will rent it and put on training for their people. Weddings, graduations, recursed. We've got a couple of homeowners associations, they use it for their biannual meetings and. Yep. Yeah. Bereavement, funeral, funeral dinners, and.
So then how much money do we, as the town, get from people who are?
So if you rent the big room with the small kitchen, it's a hundred and fifty dollars for the day. If you rent out the small room, it's fifty dollars a day. Twenty-five, if you divide that small room up into two small rooms, but most generally it's fifty. That building has been modeled all over the state, because we have received a grant for one and a half million dollars, and then our match was a portion of that building we had turned into the community hall where the small kitchen is, plus then the land. That, through the Wyoming Business Council, has been modeled all over the state, because it truly is a community center.
You know, on that, is just a slight loss, or is there's no gains?
Haven't run the numbers in a long time.
Okay, there's not gains.
Yeah, okay.
There, there might have been at one time, we had a church in there every Sunday.
When the church was there, yeah.
Every Sunday, yeah.
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 But right now, I mean, the most consistent user is every day, the meals are served to seniors every day, and there's no cost to that, of course, as you see in the budget, we subsidize those meals. So that's the most consistent use on a daily basis, and I can tell you from attending a function there, it is fairly well-attended, and the seniors appreciate having that avenue, so.
Keeps them close to home and.
But it is definitely not a moneymaker.
No, and, and I think that's where it's truly a community center.
Any other thoughts or questions on the community center? All right, go to town clerk.
Really no changes there, other than just the increase in the wages and, and benefits.
A lot of zeros, zero percent changes there. Any questions? All right, we'll go to another one, pretty stagnant, mayor and council. Do you want me to do that one?
No, I can do it. Really no changes there either. The only thing that we're asking for this year is three hundred dollars for a TV, and that's basically so that this can be placed in Chad's office, a smaller TV, so that he can utilize it as a screen, so that when we're working on things, we're not looking at.
We found that two or three of us huddled around this is a little difficult.
Uh-huh.
It was a little difficult for us to get through. You know, thirteen-inch screen is great, when you're by yourself.
Yeah. So, we're just asking for three hundred dollars out of the budget for a computer monitor.
Any touch questions on mayor and council? All right, we will go along to finance.
Finance. Biggest change would be wages.
So we do have another item that's not specifically spelled out here, so when we were going through our budget meetings, I asked.
I'd put it all in the general for right now.
You put it in the general, okay.
Oh, did you?
So one that we kind of went past the general fund, so I tasked Lexi and Janelle with looking at hosting our financial system. So right now, our financial system's all in-house, our utility billing, payroll, all of that's in-house on a server in the back room. That hardware is aging and due for replacement, as well as, when we met with Warm a few weeks ago, we are facing some cybersecurity concerns with some of the equipment things we've got aging and need to address that. So the thought was to reach out to our service provider, which is Casell, who provides our financial system, and see what it would cost for them to host that application, which would basically give us access anywhere that has internet access to the system, but also then we wouldn't have to upgrade the hardware costs for the server, the backups and cybersecurity concerns fall on the vendor at that point in time. So we did ask for a slight increase there. I'm sorry, I wasn't sure which budget was in, so.
It's spread out.
But what we're looking at is, it constitutes about a six thousand dollar a year increase over the maintenance that we have, we pay today. That's a change from what we pay for the software today. We could not replace the hardware for that cost, let alone the licensing that has to go along with the server that we maintain. Some of the benefits that that would do would be also provide that real-time integration with the new court software, it's the same company that's running our court software, and provide a single pane of glass for our citizens to log into, and they'd be able to see all their payments due for the town. If they have an overdue water payment, if they have a court fine, any of that, it would all be in that single pane, and they could make payments across the board in that single pane and see that reflected on their accounts. No, they could do it online.
And is that including water bills as well?
Mm-hmm, yep.
It would replace our express pay.
Right.
Because right now we have express pay, so it'd be express bill pay, and so it integrates with Casell, and when we do billing, it takes the bills and puts them up, so you can look at it.
But it would be six thousand a year addition. Where's that six thousand?
It's in general, we, we went past it, it was in the general government. I wasn't sure where it existed. I, I believe so, yeah, and it's, it's got a lot of benefits. Citizens can sign up for paperless billing, so we wouldn't be sending those out. You can even set up reoccurring payments, you know, because a lot of our charges, utility bill charges are pretty stagnant, you know, when you look at the water supercharges, you know, so you could set up and say, all right, I want to pay forty bucks a month, every month, and it would just automatically do that. And then if you did incur a high water usage, you know, spring or something like that, you could always add it on top, but it's a convenience, I think, for the citizens to be able to manage that, so.
I think, it's been a while since we did it, but don't they send email notifications when you get a new bill?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I think it'll be extremely beneficial to everyone, so I did want to highlight that, even though we skipped over it, I just want to make sure everybody was aware that that was a program that we were looking to institute. Absolutely. So, and I was ecstatic about the fact of us being able to integrate our systems, so you have one stop, because traditionally in the past, you'd have to have a one login report, one login for utility bills, and you have to make it in a place in the classroom and put it all together, our citizens will be able to see what they owe in one spot. To be honest, the, the database licensing to, just for that server, just the licensing to put on a new server, is, would be six thousand dollars, so. It'll actually be a cost savings, I think.
Especially in today's world with the. Especially in today's world with the hack.
All right.
Planning, we did have an increase there. That would be WLC. So all our projects that we do, engineering and stuff like that, that would fall under this budget.
So I did speak with WLC about this several years back, their budget was was cut back. And what we're seeing is you'll see in our current year actual, we'll rail over our budgeted amount this year. And it has to do with all the projects we're doing. We've got the sidewalk projects, the memorial way, the emergency connection, all of that requires planning and engineering services. So I felt like we needed to increase that line item because I anticipate it would be council's direction to continue that progress forward. So I would not see a decrease in those costs, so. Any other questions with planning?
Legal is our attorney's keys.
You can see there we have a slight increase over current year budget. Again, just pretty much everything we do runs through the attorneys. So, yep, so that cost is there. It's the only change we have there.
Emergency management. That would be Leo.
Yeah, there's a phone. It's downstairs, it's tied in with downstairs. It's.
That's why we're here.
So by default, I'm the emergency manager, but I didn't know that.
Yeah, I can't remember. It's not an actual, it's one of the lines.
Oh, it's just a line?
Yeah. I'd have to, yeah, cause it's one of the lines that gets used in the PD.
You're welcome.
Four hundred and fifty dollars.
Four hundred dollars a year.
You just leave me alone over there. We're spending thirty-seven fifty. Spending thirty-seven fifty a month for emergency phone.
Cause this isn't our twelve seven. There's not the back line.
So then are we spending four hundred and fifty on? Yeah, on a phone that we don't know if we're utilizing, that doesn't seem responsible.
Something to look into.
Is this a ghost phone?
Don't anticipate we're gonna have to review that anytime soon.
So is this telephone utilized or?
Oh, Janelle's looking, my guess it is, and we're just trying to figure out exactly which.
I remember having this discussion like three years ago.
Yeah, I can remember it as well.
And I thought, and I thought Jennifer was mayor.
Actually Leo just brought up an actual point.
You do.
So the telephone. Should I call it? See if it works. So then it's just, it's just four fifty or it's four fifty split?
Sixty-two something split is what I heard.
Yeah, sixty-five, sixty-five seventy-two. And it's split between general government and emergency management. And it said that it was in, it's been in place for.
Two, three, four.
Seven, we're spending seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents.
Let me go get the.
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this clearly of what's happening. Cause that could also be seven hundred and eighty dollars we could put towards equipment or something else.
I will tell you overall, whether we can get it done in this year or not. Yeah, cause I feel that we are paying far too much money with these old antiquated analog phone lines. And since we've now brought fiber into the town internet, I'd like to explore moving our system to voice over IP, but.
So I guess then that begs the question then, are there other areas or other things that we're paying for that we think we're utilizing?
It's a rabbit hole.
I know, I know, I'm throwing out a rabbit hole, but then this makes me like, how does people not know that we've got this phone line? Does the phone line work?
No, but we think it maybe.
Oh, it's a ring down.
I just wanted to double check, it made me nervous there for seconds.
Yeah, we've had this discussion before.
Yeah, I know we've had this, we've gone down this rabbit hole before, I knew we have.
Like I don't remember what we came up with.
Yeah, so next year when the question comes up?
Moving on.
Okay, so with that, that completes our departmental budget. So I will bring everybody back to the main sheet, the synopsis. And we'll kind of look at that real quick. So you'll see here all of the proposed expenses that we just discussed going down. Total is a proposed budget of four million, seven hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars. Anticipated revenues are five million, sixty-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars. Which leaves us basically three hundred and forty-seven dollars and three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and eighty. So out of that, then you'll see the items in yellow, which as I began, those are our, the capital asks and expenses. So those are the one-time asks that would be basically our, our sales tax revenues and things like that that we would look at. So we'll kind of go through those now. So I'll let each of the departments present theirs. We'll start with the fire, which you'll find a sheet in here, which is where Leo broke down each of these expenses individually.
It's on the very back page. Has all the. I guess one-time purchases, so our structure helmets, they're only good for ten years. And we're coming up on a time when we're gonna be replacing a bunch more structure helmets, wildland pants, they need replaced. Bunker boots are the same thing, they have ten-year, or hold on, bunkers. So quite a few years ago, cause instead of bunker gear is about thirty-five hundred dollars a set for one structural firefighter. So quite a few years ago, I asked the town to start doing three to five sets a year. So that we weren't gonna have to come up with a quarter of a million dollars, like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace all of that at once, cause it all expired. Whether we use it or not, which is a sad thing, so we tried to make sure we used the dirty body, we tried to literally hesitate a life of taking out the tag to move off. But the town's been really good, very good, over the last quite a few years. Just allowing that replacement cycle of gear, so that we don't. Hopefully we'll never run into a point where we have to come up with a significant amount of money to. Replace gear. Obviously, you see bunker boots, all of that stuff fits all together, it's all, it all has a ten-year shelf life. Or a used life, once it's used and it's broken. The guys asked for us to pitch in a thousand dollars to just kind of finish up some of the Jimmy equipment. I know we spent a lot of money on Jimmy equipment last year. They are super grateful for it, it gets used all the time. There's a lot, a couple of police officers that are using it as well. So there's just some little things that they wanted, and I thought that was very good. The hose replacements, so on our engines, we have two and a half inch hose, after lots of research. The new better hose uses two and a quarter inch, and it's in our budget this year because our two and a half hose, inch, two and a half inch hose needed replaced anyway. It's at its end of service life. And then they put a proposal together to instead of me doing two and a half or two and a half, they want it two and a quarter, which it actually turns out to be less expensive than my two and a half. But that hose needed replaced, whether, no matter what size of hose we went with, it still needed, it has to be replaced this year. The rip bag conversion is because of, well, it's because we got the newer packs, we got the grants for the newer packs. But those newer packs have a couple of different connections on them than our old packs. And I'll be honest, when we got the packs, we forgot about the rip bags, I'll be, I'm just being honest. We overlooked the rip bags, but we need, we need to convert our rip bags, so that's what we're talking about. Our structure engines are seventeen years old and they have the original tires on them from when we got them. So all of the tires on both of our structure engines in the first picture. You can see front tires for a first-out ambulance and a alignment, my command needs new tires. Last year, we started in our rope rescue equipment upgrade, cause we spent about sixty-five hundred last year in rope rescue equipment to upgrade all of the old outdated. Probably not supposed to be using stuff, and then this four thousand, well, complete paddle break, so I broke it out over the last two years. So that'll get all of our rope rescue stuff back up to date. Last year, somebody put straight gasoline in our small chainsaw in bush twelve, and then that burned up the motors, so we did a chainsaw in bush twelve.
Better the chainsaw than the engine.
I mean, realistically, she's got a.
Do you want to go down that?
We're, we're moving on.
Nope.
All right. The last couple of years, I've asked for mobile computers for marketized command vehicles. And we've been trying to get grants, apparently SHSP does not like giving grants for computers, so we've denied that. So we're in our budget, cause our computers are dying. Chief Thompson did donate a computer to a, a tough book to us, which actually is gonna work out really good. Because we can get marketized computers updated, and we can have computer privately put in our structure engine. Which hasn't had one forever, and neither one. So this donation plus this is really, it's a glorious thing. So this is only for two computers and it's not three computers and three things. Because I got to take one out, cause my phone. And then the guy is at the station on a snow blower. I know that's a weird request after the last winter we had, but. The one we have is, I don't know, a hundred years old or so, and it doesn't work, so. And we, when we had our original budget meeting, Chad told me to go look, and they were too late, they were all gone. They were gone.
Not surprised.
And then the skylights for the upstairs living quarters. As you are well aware, and if you're not, I took you through the station, there are no windows in the upstairs bunker that they live in. Mark and Cory did, Cory did a lot of research, but I know Mark was part of the conversation, they looked into their, the. Around skylights that go through the ceiling. That actually put a lot of natural light into a space that doesn't have natural light. And I think that that is a reasonable request to get some natural light upstairs. There was also, I also had seventy-five hundred dollars in here to start redoing some of the stuff upstairs, cause the linoleum is a hundred years old. The carpet is thirteen, or twelve or thirteen years old. There, we need to do some, we need to do some things in the living quarters upstairs, looking at people that are living there. Chad and I talked about it. We also have a grant hanging out there that someday we'll find out if we got it or not, to actually do the additional money for your station. So we, I didn't, I really hesitated with the seventy-five hundred to start doing stuff up there, because if we get the grant, there's no point, the town's spending seventy-five hundred dollars. Cause the grant's gonna take care of all the money. But if we don't get the grant, you guys should expect that I'm gonna come back and ask for seventy-five hundred dollars into this budget, so we can get some of the stuff done upstairs. And the skylights, we double checked where they go, whether we get the grant or not to remodel things, it will not affect the skylights, they will be good where they're at and even where they're at, even if we get, if we're asked for them, for that. These, these we would have probably put in. So those are my, some of them really aren't one-time purchases, but you know, like the bunkers and some of those things. But I think this is a good place to put them, just in case something happens at some point in time. You know, maybe there's a year where I can't buy bunkers, but we have a really, really good system going for bunkers here and all the wildland and structure stuff. So we don't get careful that keep them on this hill down the road, cause we have a thing replacing it. Cause I figured that it would cost about, about a quarter of a million dollars to replace all the bunker gears in the fire station at one time. So, you know, seventeen-five a year to keep that from happening, I think, I think that's a pretty good, it's a good program to be.
Yeah, it's further to our expense interest of public safety. I like it.
No questions over any of that?
All right, move on to the police department's seventy thousand dollars.
Try to keep, please more modernized, if you don't have access, stuff, so seventy thousand is just trading out. Chargers.
In the past, we've been leasing the vehicles, it was been a cost-effective measure. With interest rate increases and things like that, we felt that it was better to make an outright purchase for the vehicle this year, which is why you're seeing the cap ask. Any thoughts, questions on, please? All right, we'll move to parks.
My capital request this year will be for a ULV fogger. For skeeters.
I'm in agreement to that.
Robert and I have been looking at this for a while, and we all know that we do have a few mosquitoes around town. Robert and I have been looking at this for a while and we all know that we do have, uh, a few mosquitoes around town. Um, and, uh. We're always dependent upon Weeden, Cat, Nautrona County Weeden Pest to perform the function for us. And what we found in years past is that, that it's, uh, very complaint-driven. Um, so basically, you know, people call in and then when they get enough, hear enough, they'll come do the spraying. Um. I felt that it was time for us to look at and see what options we have to help with that situation. Um, and, uh, my thought was, uh, again, this is another thing that Robert is adding on to the workload of public works. Um, so I want to express that, uh. They are spread relatively thin. So, um, but for that cost, um, I felt like it was a really good investment for the town. It gives us a little more control over managing that, um, than relying on an outside agency, um, to do it for us.
Typically when they spray, it's like at dawn or at dusk. So you just have somebody here later night to do that?
Yes.
Just, just a thought. I was like spraying during the middle of the day. I don't think it's a.
So this includes, um, the equipment to do that. Um, we're going to use a existing, uh, vehicle. We're going to get it repaired and turn it into the vehicle that would operate this. This also includes training and licensing, um, uh, for Robert to also, uh, get the skills necessary. So. And then Robert, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, uh, Nautrona County Weeden Pest, uh, was very appreciative of the thought of us even doing this. And are going to, uh, be instrumental in, uh, getting the program off the ground with Robert. So.
I can see when my bulldogs collapse like that. Mosquitoes just going after them. I'm like, oh, my little babies. Like cover them up. That's the truth. They come in with welts the size of Texas.
I'll, I'll be honest with you, uh, um, when Robert came to me with the cost, it was a no-brainer to me. Um, because I felt like, uh, anybody that's been outside at, at, uh, dusk would be happy to pay. Um, to help mitigate those little buggers. So, um, so, uh, I look forward to it and I, I hope it really can put a dent into. Our population of skeeters. That was a great idea. Short of us spreading them too thin. That's my concern. This will also give us the opportunity, you know, to spray around our events like, uh, our hundred year celebration. And when we do movie day in the park, um, so that that way, you know, we're really preparing the areas before those events and, uh, try to make it more enjoyable for the citizens. Any other thoughts, questions on that? All right, last one is general government.
The proposal was for forty thousand dollars and this is to put a, a permanent message sign, message board, um, up at the community center. Um. We use our portable sign a lot, but it would be nice to have a sign up there that we can control the messages from here. Um, I did talk with Jerry Galus yesterday. I struggled a little bit when I was trying to get prices. Um, from one of his employees that is no longer there. He said that the forty thousand might be a little low. We may have to think about bumping that up a little bit. Um. The one that, that I'm kind of based in similar offer right now is the one at Fourth and Beverly right now that the rec center just installed here a couple of months ago. But it would be more on the lines to fit in with the. The, I can't think of the.
Aesthetics?
Aesthetics that we've got right now with the welcome sign up there and stuff.
That was one of the key components to me is that it, it fit our environment. You'll notice up there, community center, we've got the river rock around our Evansville sign. It's got the river rock encasing it. Um, so I felt that whatever we do should fit that theme and the aesthetics. So.
Um, we've also got Colin. Um, he's one of our part-time firefighters. He also does grant writing for us. And he's looking to see if there's any grants out there available, um, to help fund this project. But I know that the people, I think, really pull a lot of information off of the sign that we've got up there now. And having something that's more permanent, I think would be beneficial to the town.
And the reason we're asking for this one, um, in the capital expense, rather than waiting to see on a grant is I'm not extremely hopeful. That we'll get a grant to cover this. Um, it's kind of outside the scope of most of those. Um, so that's why I felt like it, it's better for us just to budget for this than.
Pre-standing, not on the building or would it be on the pre-standing?
And that does include, uh, there's a significant cost for electrical to get electrical over and things like that, so preparation. So.
So what size? Like, how big, size ones?
When I was working with the, a young gentleman from R D Signs, I was comparing everything to basically what the rec center just installed. Over at Fourth and Beverly. And that's.
As I say, four by six or four by eight is what I was thinking.
So.
It's not huge, but it's not tight. I mean, that's a, that's a decent size.
And I think that one's two-sided.
Yeah.
Um, and we would just be one-sided. So.
Well, because they're. Trees too distracting your two-sided. Catch people on the angle.
Where? We're talking about positioning it. Um. You wouldn't be able to see it from both directions.
Problem heading south, of course, is that with the building there, that we've got a really short window that you can see through the area.
I, I was thinking trees, but you're right, the building and.
Yeah. And that's the best location because it's. You know, we've got people coming in and then making a.
Somehow bar goes forty thousand.
We could be up ones at fifty-five.
Stretch to say sixty.
No, he, he, no, he, at first he said fifty and then he said maybe even fifty-five to be safe.
So we can bump that up. Now, we, we threw that out there because it's really not. I know Janelle's been trying to get pricing, but we've been unable to find anything up until now, um, with, in the dark, so what this is going to cost. So. We threw forty thousand dollars out as a, a guess.
I think the community center is the best location.
You're catching more people.
Yeah.
There are a lot of people that turn off on audio.
Yeah.
It's been very successful in the mobile sign, putting it out there. Um, a lot of people have even asked for it. Um, with upcoming topics and things. So. So I guess the first question is council supportive of it? And if so, do we want to bump that number up some? Okay. You get with that, Ken? All right, we'll move that to fifty-five. Okay, so then what you'll see there is by moving that up to fifty-five, um, that's going to take our overall number. Um, as we will still have a hundred and sixteen. Fifteen, yep, sorry, hundred and twenty-one thousand. I think she's here. Um, is what we have in still anticipated. Uh, overage of revenues over expenses. Um, I know that seems like a lot of money. However, I caution us to dig, dip too far into that. Because, um, we are already seeing the economy slowing. Um, and really, um, it would not, in years past, it hasn't take much. If the economy takes even a slight dip. Um, our sales tax loss and revenues will surpass that easily. Um, so in my mind, that's our cushion. Um, I don't feel like that's extra money. I highly anticipate that we're going to use at least some of that, um, in lost sales tax revenue this next year. So that's why we have that, that out there is that cushion. Um, last thing I want to do is get to where, um, we've run short. Because sales tax is not a guaranteed thing. It fluctuates up and down every month. Um, we're trying to really stay on top of the, um. Projections of that, um, to make sure we're staying close. Um, but, uh, with this little buffer, um, if we do see a slight downturn. We don't have to get overly concerned. We've got that buffer to, to get us through the fiscal year.
Some theory that stays strong.
Yeah, so I, it's one of the things I've been working with Lexi on. We're trying to figure out how that mechanism works, uh, uh, with the state approving us to be able to join their investment portfolio. Um, the state has an entire financial team that works on those investments. Um, and they're getting a really good return on their investment. Um, so for us, the ability to join that, I think, would be huge for us. Um, because we're, our money now is just in the traditional CDs and things like that, very low rate of return. Um, you know, we're talking a couple of percent is what we anticipate, uh, revenues from those returns. Um, where even in the downturn, uh, the state was performing much, much better than what we see. So. Um, I do, if we do stay solid, I think that would be a perfect thing that we could do is, um, stick that in there. And then, once we build that reserve in those investments, then we'll start seeing more return every year, which will increase our revenue picture. All right. Anybody have any questions overall, thoughts, concerns? I feel like we're in a good spot. So, um, I'm happy, uh, I want to thank everyone for the hard work they put into the budget. Um, you know, it's a. Point of pride with me. Um, we've spent so many years, um, under. Um, and then the last two years, we're, we're showing, um, a surplus. So I think that's a, a great thing, uh, a great turn for the town to make and, uh. A trend that I'd like to see us continue. All right, that's all I have. Okay. Not even eight o'clock. It, it's a, everybody.
Part of when we have the long meetings for budgets, were you here?
I'm the only one.
Are you?
I'm the only one left. So this used to be.
Three days.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday from five-thirty.